We have any citizens in town that stuff.
No, sir, we do not.
Do we have anybody here from leadership hall?
No.
All right, Samuel motion to approve Roman three and four. And consent and then the Mr. Smith second, Mr. Mitchell. Although the favor. All right, the district, we were up. And Mr. Green makes his way up. Graduation has come very quickly for us this school year. It is three weeks from this past Friday. So it's getting here, Mr. Green, just want to give us an update of where we are at the high school and kind of some things that are going up these last few weeks.
Okay, well, it's good to be here. I mean that here today, but also here to the point where we can talk about graduation, they're only a few weeks away. It's been a a long school year, but we're finally in a position where we can give our students and their families some clarity on how we're going to celebrate the end of the year. I want to share that with you today. So for graduation itself, we're going to hold a traditional commencement ceremony at City Park in Gainesville on Friday, May 21 at 7:30 PM. We have made the decision to limit each family to six tickets. We felt that initially we kind of sent out a message that we would be limiting tickets and the number could be four per family. But we felt given current levels of community spread, we're able to increase that to six tickets per family, and that puts us at about 65 to 70% capacity at City Park. We feel really good with that number. We're also using the airline rules for younger children. They're under two and can fit in your arms and they don't so that allows some families to bring back people that they need. We are requesting that everyone that attends brings to enter City Park will need to have a mask. And we will be making frequent reminders to everybody regarding social distancing and that's what graduates will stay as usual over at First Baptist. We'll be able to park there up until 5:45 and then we'll open up to everybody. And we will, we will process across Green Street as a tradition and take field. We'll have graduate space about three feet apart, which will take up quite a bit of room if you can imagine. So we're really excited to do that. We're not going to talk about rain, but if our hand is forced, we're going to look to try and do it on Saturday evening. If that's not clear, then we'll try to go Saturday morning outside of City Park. Weather really doesn't want to work with us, we have an indoor plan. But as long as it is not torrential downpour, we can expect graduation outside. In addition to the approximately 450 graduates that will be celebrating from the class of 2021, we'll also be recognizing three recipients of the honorary diploma. We had six nominees this year and each and every one of them was very qualified and deserving. But the Gainesville High School School Governance Council met, reviewed using the rubric that we developed and selected three recipients. First is Scott McGarry, William Scott McGarry. He's a graduate of Georgia Tech and Central Cornet High School. He founded his own business here in town and despite the commitment that that brings, he's found time over the decades to serve on numerous boards. North Georgia Health System, Center Point, Kiwanis Club. He's been a key club advisor at the high school. He's coached youth sports for 16 years. He sponsored our Reach Scholars and probably most impressively was his 16-year term on the chain crew Gainesville High School football. So we're really excited to celebrate against McGarry. The next is Betty Livingston. She's from, she graduated Hollywood High School in South Carolina, attended Winter College. She taught English for five years in Augusta, Georgia, I believe, and then became a stay-at-home mom. But then returned teaching and served 40 years as a sub-teacher. And we know how hard it is to find a sub. So for somebody to commit 40 years to substitute teaching is just unheard of. And very dependable, came in every day, brought energy, got to know the students even just as a sub, you know, she knew the students' names. We're trying to do the math, you know, it's easy, fairly easy for a teacher, you know, you can say, all right, you taught 150 students a year. You've done 10 years, it equals that amount of students, but for a sub, it's hard. You know, she might well see 400 or 500 students a year over the course of 40 years. So she's touched the lives of many young people. Her children graduated from Gainesville High School, her grandchildren graduated from Gainesville High School. And to this day, she's a very keen supporter of all that we do, so we're excited to recognize her. Our third recipient is Mr. John Naemon Lily III, graduate of Jonesboro High School in Georgia, where his dad was a high school principal. And he graduated UGA. There's a little confusion in the story whether it was his wife or his college roommate that convinced him to come to Gainesville. It's an old holt's chores ladder. But he's his roommate. But when he moved to Gainesville, John quickly became a fan of all things and supporter of all things Gainesville. His children of course attended Gainesville City Schools, but he served as a mentor to numerous kids. He and his company have sponsored our school board. He's been the president, I think, seven years of the Hip Hop Booster Club. He's come in and spoken to classes, presented to classes, spoke at the high school and middle school. He is now on the chain crew of the high school football team. And one of the things I think is most impressive about him is that whenever he is in the book, if he's in that building for 25 seconds to drop something off, he says hi to four or five kids and he knows who they are and they know who he is. That goes a long way. He's also, interestingly, going to be receiving his diploma the same night as his daughter. And we think that's a really neat thing to be able to do. So those are honorary diploma, honorary diploma recipients. We're very excited for a ceremony that will take place on Friday, 21st of May at 7:30 City Park. And I'm open to any questions you have.
You said approximately 450 graduates.
Around that, yes, sir.
We will, of course, be with you for graduation and do you have the details on that tomorrow yet?
Yes, sir. Liquid Baptist Church at 10 AM on the 14th, 15th of May, rehearsals on the 14th in the evening. It's a lot of events, I'm sorry.
Saturday morning.
Saturday morning is the batalory at 10 AM, 15, and on the 14th with the rehearsal at 5 PM.
This is a fairly early ending to this whole year for us, make sure it's a little bit later, so it does seem much as a lot of the events packed in.
It is. Yeah, so we have EOC testing over the next two weeks, AP testing over the next two weeks, and we're trying to get everything in at the end of the year as well.
And trying to collect 4,000 Chromebooks between middle and high.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Green, to add one more thing on your to-do list, I know last year because we weren't going to have the public graduation, we did the drive-by celebration, which seemed to be really popular. Was there any discussion given to maybe continue in that tradition?
Lots of discussion, yes, sir. We finally worked through the logistics of it, you know, this year with the construction, we've lost a lot of space and the flow that really worked safely get the vehicles in and out. So we've had to completely redesign the route. We had two options that we're looking at. One is on the, on the 14th, which is the same day that we're doing yearbook distribution. And we're doing signing day, so after school, when the AP exams are finished, we would host potentially on that, on that day, the 14th, the drive-through. The other option is that Monday, but we also don't want to put that in conflict with the fourth week. So we're trying to work, work through some of those logistical issues and we'll have an answer for that.
Also to change based on weather.
Also to change based on weather, yes, sir.
Any other questions?
For graduation, I was supposed to be there like I said.
Seven will work for us. We will walk out, of course, early. We do not yet know how we'll be set up on the stage, given some of the other business restrictions that we have placed. So we've got some conversations we need to do to make sure we're being responsible as well.
Yeah, there will be no assistant principals on the stage.
We'll take their place.
So we'll be able to spread out.
All right. Any other questions? Thanks, Mr. Green.
Thank you. One thing you can notice as you came in, such a table, also for the by- to grab one. George Griffin has been with us now almost a month. This year, it's been a full month now. You'll notice a graduation ad that will go out in Gainesville Times a week from, actually, this upcoming Saturday. It will be in Gainesville Times, so you'll see some great information there about, about Victoria, which will be announced later this week. And also, the schools are graduates, acceptance across the country, just a phenomenal, phenomenal class, just really proud. Been able to honor them over these next few weeks, so just be able to look out for that, getting print, but also online news as well as.
All right, Mrs. Petten. It's our fluctuation financial audit. This will use one point.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to present to you this evening final results for FY '20 financial audit report. We need to see the unmodified opinion on that, which is what we are looking for. There were no findings or no submitted violations of the statement, so we do have a clean audit report for FY '20.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Yes.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank Board and Dr. Williams and Mr. Miles for all the support that we get continually for the finance. Certainly not accomplish it and do that without all the support available. True, I appreciate.
Low risk again.
Low risk again.
Thank you very much. I didn't think it was necessary, but in spirit, that's in ceremony. We've got a motion by Mr. Smith. So we've got a second by Dr. Reddell. Thank you again. Also, if you will talk about the schedule for upcoming budget adoption.
Sure. We will have on May 17th our regular session, we'll be able to present the board tentative budget adoption and tentative military for your tentative adoption. And prior to that, we will be publishing on the website all of this information. It's not required to publish in a paper, in a newspaper, but we will be publishing that on the website. And then the upcoming required hearings that we'll have, depending on kind of the military adoption that we will present, we'll be publishing that in the newspaper seven days prior to June 14th. So that will be on June 6th, we'll be publishing that in the newspaper. And then the first hearing will be on June the 14th at 16:00 AM. And then we will be publishing again seven days prior to the June 21st meeting, which will be on June 13th, publishing in the newspaper. And then the final two hearings will be on June 21st at 11:00 AM and at 5:00 PM, just prior to the regular work session, I mean, regular
So if you look at these times, they kind of are scattered, but we are required to have hearings at certain times of the day to make it available to people that are working based on certain times of the day. Also, we are required to have three budget hearings regardless of what we do with the military. So the last two to three years now, we've combined those, just do them all at the same time, which has benefited as well. So that's why you see kind of a combination of, we have to have three years of the budget, depending on when you accept anything, going to have to roll back, lower of the military rate, and we have to have two required hearings, instead of five, let's do three and combine them and make it worthwhile for the citizens to be able to buy now and then.
And during the newspaper publishing, we will require a notice of tax increase, if that's the case, and we'll have our fabric of history that we'll publish. As all the budget.
Just a quick question with the time, so we publish it twice a week, they soon have issued you headlines.
Yes, and that would be the Sunday, but the Wednesday would not fulfill the seven days required, so it would be the Sunday.
It's Wednesday, Saturday.
Saturday, okay. It's on Saturday, yeah. Which gives us an excess of seven days.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Did you print those out for? Did you print that schedule? Would you give a point? All right, next item, excellent, the annexation of 299 Gilgey Drive.
At the last board meeting, board you approved needs to move forward with the closing of that property. It is adjacent to the existing middle school property and we needed it based on some topography there. So we did close on that almost two weeks ago now, and now we would like to move forward with the question, annexing that property into the city to join the rest of the population.
Got a motion? Motion by Mr. Dornold. A second by Dr. Randy. Any questions, sir? All of the favor. All right, Mr. Petten, you're back up for write-off of the 2013 and 2014 personal property taxes.
Yes, this is a request from the city of Gainesville. They typically do this annually. We have from last year, but this is why we have to this year, a write-off of personal property taxes. And the amount to the district is $30,570.
Got a motion by Mr. Smith. Got a second by Dr. Randy, any questions? One question I had about this is, so with this money they're providing all, is this currently showing up as basically a tax receivable or?
There is no, there is no actual write-off to us because we never recorded the revenue.
Okay, so it's just. All those in favor? Motion carries, this is Petten, if you will discuss the FY '21 budget amendments.
The first budget amendment for the general fund. And basically, the first step is for the revenues. We're recognizing the bottom line, additional revenues of $3.8 million. And most of that is made up of the additional midterm for the PD. I did go through and run some adjustments for the additional airborne taxes that we receive to date and additional TAT and some other adjustments that we're aware of at this time. So.
Oh, it's our interim application.
Everything added together, about 2.5.
That's mainly due to the alsteria that was put into this year's budget. We received 60% of that back in the midterm. Some of the year budget, that was where those, that was why we had such an increase.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you just said.
In the last year, going into the school year with, with funding, we were cut, what was originally around 14%, up to around 10%.
Okay.
They gave us 60% of what was cut back mid-year. So all this stuff for us.
Of the 10%?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that would be the same going into next year, we'll continue with that funding going into next year, hopefully, this term next year, we'll get more of that 40% or that 10% that's still out there.
Let's say, within expenditures, around a $10,000 increase in expenditures at this point, and that's just confirmed speaking at this point, when they have some further reductions. But basically, at the, affecting our fund balance at this time, that is additional positive to the fund balance of 64,000. So we're looking at a projected beginning fund balance of 20,000, you know, in 167. So that's.
So it's the second page first, first.
So basically, that's due to the increase in revenue. So, very roughly speaking, we could be in a, at a breaking.
Motion to approve the amendments. There are motions by Mr. Smith, do we need to, do we want to do this together? All right, go.
The second is for federal budget amendments. And here, we're just recognizing the difference between what we originally budgeted for the federal programs and what the awards of paying in that.
So just remember, federal funds, the money that comes in has to go out, that's why you see both expenditures spending the same amount.
By Mr. Smith, do you like to make a motion or vote?
All right.
Okay, we got a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Mitchell, all those in favor to accept both reports. Thank you.
Evening. We have learned that we will be unable to receive the full order of HP Chromebooks that I came to you much earlier in October and requested. We are only going to be short about 400, but we do need to make an adjustment in our plan as a result of that. So we located a Dell two-in-one that will do exactly what the HP Chromebook would do. And it is available, we know it's in stock, so we won't have any problem with getting it. And we also had a great opportunity come up in that we had some extra funds from L4GA that became available for us to be able to purchase even beyond those 400 that we need to replace. So by buying those extra devices, we'll be able to provide one-touch device for every one of our elementary school classrooms, not just kindergarten or pre-k, kindergarten and first grade, where we will give those to every student. So each teacher will have a touch Chromebook, a tablet that they can use. They can mirror it to their front of classroom projection, which gives them some neat ability to be able to write on that and do activities with that in the classroom. It'll also be a great tool for them to use in modeling activities that they're going to ask our students to do. So I am coming before you tonight to request the board approve the purchase of 684 Dell two-in-one Chromebooks at a total cost of $244,838, of which $151, excuse me, $151,638 will be paid for with the L4GA funds. $93,200 will continue to come from the CARES funds, where we had originally requested those funds to pay for the HP. And just to be clear, we never paid HP any money because we had not received those devices, so we're not, we're not out anything.
So the money that we had already approved for the initial devices is part of this, we're basically reapproving that.
That $93,000 is what you had approved last time and you're re, you know, just letting you know that we're still allocating that, yes.
And we're adding more devices mainly because of the L4G, which is the literacy grant fund, we have to extend those by the end of June. And we know that these Chromebooks are ready to be delivered, so that way we don't have to worry about sending money, any help for June money back to the state. And so it's an opportunity to just add value to some of the funds that are remaining as a part of that literacy grant.
And what is your timeline?
We will have all devices here by the 4th, June 30th. In fact, I expect pending your approval, to be able to place that order tomorrow, so that we would be able to receive devices in as few as a couple of weeks.
So I know for myself, if there's, if teaching me on one device or the teacher has one device and I have a different device, I would get confused.
The operating system is exactly the same, all the screens are exactly the same. The only difference is, is that as a teacher, when I'm in front of you, I can hold that device like it's a tablet and be able to use my finger, no matter where I'm standing in the room. I'm sorry.
The extra 400 that you're talking about?
The 400 that we're replacing will be for our youngest students
Okay.
who are not yet quite ready to do keyboarding.
Right.
So they'll have that touch experience. And then the extra ones that we purchased will be for the teachers, so they have that ability to kind of be anywhere in the classroom, but yet be able to mirror and show an activity on screen that they can model for kids what to do or use it as they're observing around in the classroom.
Motion to approve. Got a motion by Mr. Smith. And a Mr. Dornold first, thinking about Mr. Dornold, all those in favor? All right, Mr. Dornold, I've got a sidebar question.
Yes, sir.
Somebody just said you're about to collect Chromebooks.
Yes, sir, we'll be collecting Chromebooks from our middle and high school students and taking those up at the end of the year so that we can refurbish them and get them ready for distribution as we go into the next year. We learned from working with many other school districts that allowing students just to keep them sometimes ends up with them being in worse shape than if we check them every year and get them re-ready for distribution. So Mr. Green and Ms. Freeman are working along with us, and we have a plan to be able to collect those as close to the very end of the year as possible.
What about the Chromebooks that the elementary kids have?
So the Chromebooks the elementary kids have generally are staying in the classroom, but they're using them. They're not necessarily taking those home every day.
Okay.
Our students who are in Gainesville Virtual Academy will be returning their devices on the 20th and 21st after school ends, because of course we take that Chromebook, but then they really can't do anything. So we'll take those up after the last day of school, they'll be returning them to the middle school, and we will be providing them with notification very shortly to let them know about that process.
And our summer school students?
So we will have devices available in the building for students to use. We will not be issuing devices for students to take home. All that said, we know that there will probably be a limited amount of use of those Chromebooks this summer during summer school, and that's due to a number of factors, including the fact that we are transitioning our student information system, and that is helping, is causing some things for us to do as far as rostering is concerned and application access. So we've again worked with the school, so they're ready to take care of what they'll have available versus not available.
You'll see the Chromebooks used more in the summer program. At middle and high, we've encouraged all of them to have, you know, summer school, typically here, summer school does not sound very engaging, but we've asked the schools to make it very engaging. If a kid has come to the school in the summer, sit on the computer, we're not going to successfully do this. So it does not conflict with us taking the Chromebooks.
What is the advertised life statement of a new hall?
We have Chromebook. We have Chromebooks under warranty, the H Ps are under warranty for three years. Um, we will probably try to get a little more than three years, again, working with my colleagues around the state who are also issue Chromebooks in a one-to-one setting, we're typically seeing four or five years. Now, some of my colleagues right here in the same county will try to get even seven years out of them.
One thing that we are looking at budgeting is knowing that now CARES one, CARES two, the A R P funds are available up through September twenty twenty-four. Being able to use the backend of that funding to replace what we need to replace the district. So hopefully, then we wouldn't have to come out of some of the funds that we we, we use on a year-over-year basis, um, so we will be doing possibly the same thing with teacher laptops as well. Uh, so we're going through the rules and regulations of all the CARES funds, what's allowable, what's not. And, and looking how it can help our general fund budget, which is what it's intended to do, is helping to help school systems meet learning loss, uh, while at the same time, uh, not putting such a burden on districts, uh, here in, here in the panel.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson, I apologize for post-. Well, thank you. I'm excited to come before you tonight and share with you, or propose to you, uh, new company, custodial company that we believe takes into next season. For us here at Gainesville City School System, uh, we put out an R F P for custodial services back March first. Uh, again, uh, last year we had put it out on the street, and then, of course, COVID, uh, COVID happened and we pulled it back in. And so we put it back out this year, uh, our current company has been with us now, counting last year's, it's six years. Uh, the last two years was a year-to-year, um, and we felt system-wide and feedback from principals and, uh, school nutrition staff and other people throughout the district felt as though it was time to rebid, and so we put it back out on the street, March, March first, went through the state procurement, uh, procedures. Uh, we did a, a mentor walkthrough, all of our companies showed up, we did a walkthrough of buildings. We had a total of fourteen companies to submit a bid proposal, uh, based on our R F P. Uh, we narrowed it down, we had a seven-person, uh, committee that included two principals. Uh, so we narrowed it down, uh, those fourteen companies, uh, based on two criteria, of course, one is cost. And the second one was we did a rubric for overall response to the R F P. Uh, we, we interviewed two companies, uh, Hess Facilities, L F C out of Knoxville, Tennessee, and Intercontinental Commercial Services out of Lawrenceville. Well, I interviewed two, because the third company was two million dollars above, uh, Hess. And then they were in the general rubric, they were number five. So we only interviewed the two companies. And after going through the interview process, uh, the selection of committed, uh, deals to recommend Hess Facilities, uh, L F C out of Knoxville, Tennessee, uh, for, for a three-year term, uh, five million six hundred and seven thousand thirty dollars twenty-nine. Uh, starts on July twenty-first of this year, goes through June of twenty twenty-four. Uh, we've already shared with them, and I'll ask Russ real quickly, come up shortly, and then introduce his team. But one of the things that, uh, that we've talked about, we know that we've got a short window, uh, this summer for cleaning our buildings, as all of our schools will have summer school. Our new teachers will come back, a new teacher will report third week in July, so it gives us that short window. So we, we talked, we talked to all of our companies about our schedule and everything, and we believe, again, that Hess is going to be able to come in and really make a difference in our, our buildings, uh, the way that they look, the cleanliness of them, and really put forth a valid effort to really get them, uh, up to par and up to speed. Um, we've also talked to them about the requirements that Gainesville School System has always had uh, for companies that come into business with us, one of them is that they would, uh, have a physical local office. Two, that they, of course, would obtain a local business license, three, that they would hire from the local community. I've also sent an email to all of our principals, asking for them their list of current, uh, A B M employees that they wish would stay employed and stay in their buildings. And so we've gotten that list from the principals, we're passing that list on to Hess, so that we make sure that those number of employees stay employed. Third thing that they'll do is that they'll hit the ground running and they'll host a job fair. They'll host several if they have to, uh, the goal is to get us up to, speed up to, uh, full capacity, it's for staff. And our current company has just not been able to really get us up to staff for about six, nine months or so. Any questions?
Mr. Nelson, I had a couple of questions, and I don't know if maybe this would be a question for the head's team, but, um, with a, with an engagement like this, are they in here, are they coming in every night, is it on weekends, like, just logistically, how does that?
Okay, yeah, of course, first it starts with day quarters. Each school has an allotted number of day quarters based on, uh, school capacities, that's staff and students. Uh, and then based on, uh, what individual teach, school says that they need. One school may say that, you know, given our size and everything, we need four day quarters, one, other schools, elementary schools may only need three day quarters. So day quarters will come in six A M, work through till thirty, three o'clock, then you'll have, uh, the night quarters who'll come in and they'll work through, you know, nine, ten o'clock if necessary to get the building clean, so you've got two shifts. Uh, they also work events, uh, games and gym basketball games, volleyball games, they make sure locker rooms is clean, leaguers are clean. Uh, so they also do in a system function, uh, activity that's on campus, open weekend, uh, theater presentation or what have you. So that's all in their contract as well. Thank you. The other question? Motion to approve. Got a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Smith, all of them in favor. Great, Mr. Smith. Great, let me ask Russell just real quickly, he'll just come up and introduce, uh, introduce himself to you all, and, uh, just real quick, quickly, Russ, just share with our superintendent on board, the commitment that you guys have made to us during our interview process.
Uh, is that okay to take this off? Okay, uh, just while we're talking, uh, I'd like to introduce my name, my name is Russell Leebach, by the way, I'm Vice President of Business Development. Nate Chris is our Regional Manager and Dave Williams is our Area Manager. Um, I want to commend your school system for the, the process they utilize, the company. And I'm not saying that just to cozy up to Adrian, because I'm not scared of him, I'm scared of his principals. They're, they're the ones I need to make a turn of, I don't need to make a turn of. Um, but they, they went through a very, uh, good process to select a company. Instead of having a company, the companies come in and do pony, dog and pony shows, a presentation about who they are and what they do. We sat for an hour and a half, rapid-fire interview questions from their, their staff. That's not easy, and these were real questions, I mean, these were questions like, why do you want to do business with Gainesville City Schools? And what are your challenges and weaknesses as a company? These were really hard questions. So it's absolutely the way you should choose any provider to your school system, but we were very impressed by the process. Uh, what I will tell you is, our company takes this very personally. I think the majority of us are products of public education, and if, if I'm working with you a year from now and you don't come up to us and say our school system is a better school system because of a partnership, then I don't feel like we did our job, and I'm not very happy about what I do for them. So that's the commitment you get from us, we thank you first, you'll, you'll get a good program from us, you have my word, you have our word. Any questions? I have your move.
Are you in Georgia, in other systems yet?
Pauling County, we've been serving for quite some time.
Okay.
Uh, but we have a hu- over a hundred and fifty education partners nationwide, we're in twenty-two states, we're growing very, very fast. Uh, one of the problems that you have with private companies who come and serve their school system is over time they get complacent. It's not like being married, you know, you get married, you have the honeymoon, you're newlyweds, everything's great. Then after a while, the marriage is not going so well, you know, you're not bringing her flowers or him, you know, you're not doing anything for him anymore. So we don't want to get complacent like that, and these guys think I have a marriage problem, I'm always using. No, 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 I've been married thirty-three years happily, I have a great marriage, I'm just satisfied, I have a great marriage. So, uh, we want to have a great marriage with you, we don't want you to just be satisfied, we want you to be wild, we want you to enjoy, to enjoy the partnership and relationship with us.
How, how does your management work? So you'll obviously have people in our, in our schools, and you mentioned that you have re- regional oversight, area oversight. Are there managers that are coming in and sort of working with those people on a weekly basis, monthly basis, like, how does that?
So I'll let Nick and Dave talk to that.
So that's, that's your question, it'd be a weekly basis, I'll be the regional manager for Gainesville City Schools, I've got an account manager that's dedicated to this account. Because, of course, their job is to be in there, be the principals day in and day out, whether it's serving the, the human events, of course, all that, they're ensuring that, as addressed. Um, and then I'm here for support, of course, we have, uh, you know, some folks that work out there for corporate that come in and they help out with H R-type stuff and, and safety, things of that nature, make sure we're all up to par.
And then, and then Dave is our area manager, Dave.
And I, I just be good for whatever support they need, wherever they need me to be, that's what I be.
Uh, Dave has a great relationship with Pauling County, so if you know anybody in Pauling, if you ask about Dave, they'll, they'll say that that's. I think. So, anything else we can answer for you? We're looking forward to it.
Good luck in the hiring process.
Yeah, so I will just give you, it, it is, and, and what it means is that when, when things get tough, you've got to put more resources on it. You gotta, you gotta, uh, you know, really go out there and you gotta sell what your company offers to people, and I think what we offer is a better uh, relationship, a better situation, because when you're not highly compensated, I don't care if you're a teacher, police officer, custodian, you need to get a lot of respect, it works, you know, people need to respect you, they need to return your phone calls, you need to have equipment that works when you try to use it. So what we do is we try to give our team a lot of respect. And in turn, when we do that, they want to stay with us, so I'll just give you two quick examples, Powhatan, Virginia, we just started services with them in December, they were at, um, forty-nine percent staff when we started, they're now ninety-seven percent staff. They'll tell you that number if you don't believe it. Um, Buford, South Carolina, right down the road here, we went in there, they were seventy-nine percent staff, they're now ninety-eight percent staff. So we're going to come in here, we're going to utilize the resources we have, and if we have to keep more resources, we will, if we have to work harder, we'll work harder, but we're going to improve your staff. Yeah, we're.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, do we have any, uh, discussion on it?
So, Mr. Chairman, uh, as we get towards the end of the year, would it be possible for us to get a vaccination recast in terms of numbers? Would it also be possible to collect some random, uh, reasons? If, if this is legal, I'm curious about random reasons for the vaccines. Just, I think if it's legal to solicit that it is still an issue, um. Health safety stuff.
We could definitely give you some numbers.
Think of it as anonymous, then it's kind of hypocritical.
And we'd be able to give you the number of people we vaccinated at our event, but beyond that, we don't know, unless we've been told.
And so, uh, you know, if you ask me on a anonymous survey that Jill can do, I would, and I, my vaccine came through my physician, and I would answer you. Without breaking, tell, we don't know, but I would answer. If, if that is, that we still have health, safety, uh, issues, that's what, um, my question.
So what, what I'd like to add to that is as we welcome the end of school and summer, going into next school year, we don't feel like we're in a position yet to talk about next year as far as what some of the procedures will be like. Uh, we will be working on that over the next couple of months, I'm saying now C D C guidelines change, there's, so, the more, uh, vaccinations that we have, the more we hear about our families having success, the more our numbers stay down, the more freedom I think we have to be able to make some of those adjustments. So we do know that we'll be opening some things up to what extent yet, we still we still won't know for a couple of months.
Sure, thank you. My second question is that, uh, if you want the team to put us a season recap of our towards high school suspension, uh, activities, uh, let's, let us know how we have done. All right. And, right, just check. And a motion to, during, to, to, uh, second by Dr. Randy, all of them in favor.